Okay, it's four o'clock, Wednesday, February fifteenth, 2023. We're gonna start the Town of Sangerville Select Board Meeting, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minute, item two, approval of the minute, Select Board Meeting, two, one, 2023.
Can we make a motion to approve that?
Second.
All in favor? We're all three in favor of that. Item three, review of treasurer's warrants, payroll, twelve, fifteen, and accounts payable, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen.
Make a motion to approve any of these writs.
Second.
All in favor? We're all three in favor. We have open session, but I don't think anybody here... Does somebody want open session? I didn't think so. Okay. If you change your mind, let me know. Item five, old town hall building business, anything new and fresh there?
No, I sent another drawing to Nick, and I haven't heard back from him, but he did bring me, you know, we met last Wednesday, and we, I mean, he's making good progress on it, so hopefully...
Yeah, what I've seen is encouraging. We've all kind of tweaked it, and I think, I'm anxious to see the final product, but it looks like it's gonna be...
It's on a different building.
Correct.
Yes, yeah, this would be, yeah, totally different project.
The last one says...
Yeah, no, that's right. That's...
This one.
This would be the Public Works Building, proposal, the proposal we're working on.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
I mean, regarding this, the old building, did we discuss, there was an article in the paper?
Oh, yeah.
There was, probably the most interesting thing was, I found out that Robinson's actually went out of business, which, that was kind of a surprise to me.
Do you think that's accurate?
No, I was kind of mocking the report.
Oh, 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 I was gonna say.
I know they relocated. They're not out of business, Robinson's is just fine.
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, gotcha.
But there was, actually, there was quite a lot of information in that article that was similar to that, so it was kind of...
Yeah, the only thing that I would say that is positive is that more eyes on the building, maybe somebody from beyond Bangor sees it and has interest.
You never know.
Silly, I want to mention, there was one piece of that article that I a hundred percent agree with, that Diana said. She actually referenced the building as a historical value, and she's right, there is a historical value, but it doesn't mean it's a town value, it's not a, for the town, for a town office, that's not where the value of that building is. The value of the building is because it's a historical building, it's a in-town landmark, per se, and there was all kinds of people, I went on their website, or on their Facebook page, because there was all kinds of comments, a lot of shares, a lot of the comments, that's what they were directed the positive to, was more of the historical side of it, not so much the town side of that.
How it makes them feel.
Yeah, tons of comments about the building, and yes, you need to save it, I went down through, I'd say ninety, ninety-five percent of the comments are all from people that are not in our community, and I think that's important, I don't want, if you look at it quick and say, oh, look at the support, well, it's support that's not tax-based. Not that I don't care what people think, but none of those people are gonna help share this cost if something was gonna happen, so I think that's kind of important, and I don't know about you guys, between the newspaper article and everything getting shared all over Facebook again, I got zero phone calls, not a single person with any interest to even talk about that building.
I've never had a call yet.
Okay, so, just kind of...
Did I read somewhere that it's on the federal historical registry?
I have no idea.
It is.
It is, it's on both state and federal?
It's on, um, national. It's on the national, not federal.
National.
It's on the national registry, if you go in and look, it says it's only, only locally is it of any interest. It doesn't, has a, you know, a state or a national level, it doesn't hold any...
I thought it was like, if you go on the federal or something, and there's money available, great money.
That was a...
It was nonprofit, it could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think if municipalities don't have as much access as, you know, like Dale said, private nonprofits, and actually, we've fished around for that, too, there doesn't seem to be any interest in any nonprofits either.
Right.
So, it's...
And that's, honestly, that was kind of like my hope, because there is some Facebook interest, I guess?
Like it in Dover with the...
Yeah, no, we were very familiar with that process.
That was federal.
Yep.
If there was enough interest...
Well, he got some, but it was local interest.
Right.
Yeah. It could help, it could help the historical society, I mean, if you had enough people who's interested in the building, and join the historical society, or they could create their own nonprofit, save the town hall, or say, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I would have, I mean, we, this has been discussed with historical society a couple times, they actually are...
No interest.
Repulsed by the idea, I mean, she literally said, no!
Too big.
Yeah, exactly, with no interest, so, but there might be another group that would have an interest.
Well, actually, I think, in, in that article, they, she clearly said that she felt there should be taxpayer money used, which...
There was a real estate interest, wasn't there?
There was, yeah, and I haven't heard back.
He hasn't come back, maybe in the spring.
Yeah, but there was another state interest.
For apartments, right?
Correct.
And I know, I mean, like, there's a lot of conversation with the old mill, not the one that they did redo, but the other one, is it Brown's Mill?
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of conversation about somebody out of Portland, they're gonna revamp all of that into apartments, so there's all kinds of state, federal money for even that type of thing, so...
Well, I don't think it's going anywhere anytime soon.
Nope.
Moving on to six, tree growth penalty.
Right here, we're having a person's taken out, seventy-seven acres out of tree growth.
And we have this on now, right?
Yeah, forty-six hundred...
I don't know if they want it to be in there.
One, two, three, yep.
What's the address?
Uh, Matt Lot, um...
Oh, it doesn't have the address?
No.
It's actually the, the guy that bought the, the dozer from us, so I believe he wants to build a home here, is what I believe, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have a street address, it's just Matt Lot.
Down the Green, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Six one? The Range Road?
Uh, the South Sangamo Ridge, up by, up by Noots.
Yeah, beyond the cemetery?
Beyond, yeah.
Yep, he put up a metal building down there.
He put up a metal building beyond there?
Yeah, or he, he proposed to, he had an application last year. Storage building, equipment, some wheels, a lot like that.
We don't have to make any, you know, we just, I just made...
B, sale of miscellaneous items.
Yes, C and W Newton is buying some miscellaneous items for us for forty-four hundred dollars, and I just got your signature on the bill of sale, it's just a bunch of miscellaneous stuff in the, about...
I know, he'd mentioned some old tires.
Yeah, some tires, and some cutting edges, and things like that, but it's a good way to...
Was the fuel tank in that?
Yes, the fuel tank is in there.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah.
Just my duties going on there.
Yep.
Why don't we go by C and go to the fire department?
Yep.
Get rid of everything, and we'll go back to that.
Yeah, then we'll go back to that, because Matt's gonna stay for the whole thing, so. So, item seven, fire department's overage, forty, oh, forty-six hundred, twelve dollars and forty-two cents.
Yes, that is, if you look at the budget and see, a lot of it was really, um, some gear they had got, some turnout gear, really set us over the budget, and we, we had discussed at one of the select board meetings about getting the payroll, so it's brought, because we were carrying a couple months each year over, we brought it, so now, we only carry like two weeks of previous share into the, the new year, but we have to...
We're gonna have to approve this?
Yes, because it will have to go on the warrant, yeah, which, it could come out of, yeah, it could come out of contingency.
Is that, is that the only amount of money that you expect of contingency this year?
That, and then the, the one right below it.
Oh, cemetery overage?
Yeah, and that was because we paid on, there's a clause in all the contracts about fuel.
Oh, okay, yep, yep, yep.
So, this year, we've, I built the budget so that we can have that, but yeah, so that was additional fuel for the, for PJ.
So, the, the big number for the equipment, when did that come in?
It was like May or June, but it was ordered, Earl, it was ordered...
Well, what I'm getting at, I guess, is, I don't, I know what you just said, and I'm not trying to take away from that, but I don't see that as an excuse, because if you know you spent forty-five hundred dollars too much in May, you've got the rest of the year to adjust your budget, whether it be...
Yeah, I mean, I did send email, emails and text messages every month, letting them know where the budget was, so...
Right, but what Dale said is...
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
We knew we had an overshot in May, and we didn't, we weren't able to adjust anything between May and the end of the year.
I mean, if you did this, how would your car get repossessed, or you're...
Oh, absolutely.
You'd be kicked out of your house, or whatever, and I'm, I'm, I just don't know, why did we let that go that far over? You guys, assuming that's why you're here.
I wasn't in charge of the budget at that time, I'm here to talk about next year's budget, I don't have those numbers, Chad was not able to be here, he's caught up at work, so...
We could have controlled it by, I could have done, not paying them the last payroll, and that would have...
No, that's, but that, that's not the, even that's not the, you know what I mean? If you knew in May you spent five thousand dollars more, I know there was a lot of extra trainings last year, those shouldn't have happened, I mean, there's a lot of things...
That's all stuff that we've corrected since then, but you're not seeing it on these numbers, like, we cut half the trainings and half the Sunday duties out, so that we can cut all that down.
But it...
Like, you're not looking at that in last year's numbers, you're gonna be looking at that in next year's numbers.
But again, if this was your house, in May, and you knew you spent five, you was gonna be five thousand dollars short, at the end of the year, your car was gonna get repossessed, you'd do something different to get to January, is what I'm saying.
I'm aware of that, I, like I said, I was not in charge of any of this at that time.
Also, under the, I remember, I could be wrong with this, these actually were ordered last year.
Correct.
Which is a bigger problem.
Correct, so not only did this occur in May, which gives us all kinds of time to correct it, we knew we had ordered it...
It was ordered before the...
In twenty-one.
Yeah, it was ordered before the budget.
And we still didn't adjust for it.
Which isn't supposed to happen.
My question is, how, how do you guys, you say correct it, but how do you correct that? Because if there's no money added to that, we can't just take it from fuel or electric or...
Well, there's a lot of things, well, I know the planning boards come in and mentioned that the thermostat was cranked to eighty when they came in here, I know you guys, there's trainings, you guys, you know what I mean? There's ways you could have saved money if you tried.
I understand what you're saying, well, what we're dealing with right now is, in order to, to cover this town effectively as a department, we need number one people. When I hired six new people on this year, which we just had, they don't do us a whole lot of good without training, I'm not sure how we can get people to save your house, or protect your property, or cut you out of the car, if we can't train them, like, that money is coming...
So, to me, that's what we should have thought about before we ordered the gear, because you have...
We have, right now, almost three-quarters of the gear out there is out of Bureau Labor Standards compliance.
Because of...
So, because it hasn't been getting replenished every year.
But why is it out of standard?
Because it's ten years.
We don't, mean as in that, we doesn't go by an FPA?
We go by Bureau, no, an FPA, that's Bureau Labor Standards, so, ten years, the gear is no longer in use anymore for us, we can't use it.
But, oh, that's probably true, I'm sure it's true. That has nothing to do with this, though.
No.
He, we made a purchase...
That's why they're purchasing gears, to try to make sure that you guys make hundreds of thousands of dollars.
That doesn't have anything to do with this, we purchased something last year.
Right.
We knew we purchased it.
Yep.
And we didn't adjust our budget for it.
Right.
Well, that's, I, like I said, I didn't do the budget.
No, I'm not...
But it's the same deal, though, like, right now, I would hope the fire department has nothing on order.
As of right now, I don't believe anything is on order.
But that's, that's what I'm saying, that's the process.
And if we did, it would be accounted for in this year's budget.
Right.
Right.
But we didn't do that last year.
Right.
So, we spent taxpayer money without permission, that's...
That's bottom line.
That's all it is.
And I can help you guys out with that next year, but what happened last year, I have no idea.
Yeah, and we did the same thing last year, we were over last year, too.
Correct.
So, it's kind of a pattern.
Yeah.
But, but we're not poo-pooing training, we, everybody's gotta be safe, they gotta know what they're doing, this is just a budgetary thing.
Right.
But, but we don't have a choice, we do have to pay the bill, and, so, yeah, we'll, this will be moved to overage, along with the cemetery, which we don't have a choice on that either.
What was the cemetery on?
It was fuel.
No, I know.
Oh, fuel, it was fuel.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Forgot about that, he's got that on that, too.
Yeah, so like I said, I've built, this year's gonna be built right in, so, we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, you know, we did...
We never anticipated.
We did that with plowing.
Yeah.
We didn't do it with the cemetery.
No, we did, so that's why I'm making sure that all of them, yeah.
Are you sure we're down to have an access to it?
Yeah, that would be nice.
Anything more on those?
Nope.
Road Commissioner's report.
Do we have to make any sort of motion to put this into overage, or take it out of contingency?
We will, we do the budget.
Got it, right, yeah, got it. I just, it has to be brought up at a select board meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Anything from...
No, I posted all of those.
I say, I know she had the posted's up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, towns posted early this year, so I said, let's get rid of them, yeah, so that...
We are gonna have, we always have, that little flooding between Eastlers and my mother, that first guardrail, I notice that's pretty full right now, tomorrow's gonna be fifty and sunny, if he can get over there and punch a hole in that...
Okay, I'll, yeah, I'll give him, yeah, because we had some issues with Gulf Road, I had gotten a call from Santos Ed from Dick Wager, so we had to, there was a lot of bad ruts, I took a ride over, and it was pretty bad, so they actually sent emails thanking us, because I got the notes over there, and they took care of it, so...
Yeah, and he's punched holes in that before.
Yeah, so I'll make sure that...
It's gonna flow tomorrow.
...get over there again, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't know, you, did you want to speak? We have an open session, and...
This is our landlord, that's our landlord.
Oh, okay, did you want to speak?
No, I just kind of wanted to listen, I think I missed the part I was supposed to be here before to relive, so you, just wanted to talk about, you know, the lease, and I don't know if that's today, or I'm...
Well, actually, we're having a budget meeting, so, that's gonna be, that will definitely be part of our budget, so...
Okay, I agree.
Onto the solar ordinance, we've got three people from the planning board here, and Jerry sent Lois, Lorna, a copy of the ordinance, and she sent it to Dale and I, so we've got, we just wanna kind of tweak it, I guess. You can lead if you want, Dale.
Actually, do we want to talk about the lease really quick? It's not gonna take very long.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
You know what I mean, then you wouldn't have to sit here.
That's true, because, yep.
Well, no, I mean, it's, but it's pretty quick, I mean, it's not a, we got a lot to talk about before we get to that, that's all I'm saying, but as far as...
Yeah, Dale's right, let's go back to the lease, and our landlord's here.
I'm Lee Morgan, just in case anybody's interested, I'm the landlord of the...
You had your hat on, that's why I didn't recognize you.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, hey, I understand, trust me.
So, Lorna and I were talking about possibly doing a year, is that something you want to consider, or...
We would consider it, we'll talk about it, a year, we, a year we have to put into the warrant, the town would have to vote on it.
I don't care either way, six months is fine for me, it's not like...
Right.
Anything crazy's gonna happen between then and now.
And she has the numbers, that will be part of the budget discussion.
So, we can, can't we do one year? It's multi-year, you have to put as a...
If that's true, then we might consider doing that.
Because even on a plow contract, we approve a plow contract on a one-year, but...
Yep.
A multi-year contract is when we have to take it to the town.
I, so, I would suspect that we would lean that way.
Okay.
Because I know we're gonna need it for a year, even if, even if our plans go forward, we're gonna need it for a year for sure, so...
So, Lorna, you do have that, those numbers?
Yes, I do.
From Lee, yeah, yeah, I'll probably put them in the budget, oh, good, there you go, so we're good.
Do I think we're good?
Okay.
So, as far as, I'm just curious, as far as us being there with the tenants, everything with, going well on your side?
Everything's good, I've had some other issues.
Okay.
Flooding and stuff, which I've had...
I heard you had some bad luck.
I had TLT come out, and they're gonna actually come out and look at the grid, and they're literally gonna try to fix it here in the summer, I hope, that big puddle that's down between the buildings there.
Yep.
They're supposed to be coming to fix that.
Nice.
So, the only thing I was curious about is pricing, I'm guessing we find the same with the same pricing, the only thing that I'm worried about is I did get hammered with fuel this year, I mean, it's, everybody did, everybody's feeling the pain, so, I don't know if, if there's any, you know, anything that, I don't wanna do a year lease and then be like raising rent a year from now, or two years from now, I kind of want to set on a number, and it'd be, I'm, I'm good with the number that's now, but I have enough of thoughts on that, you know, the pricing of everything, this, going out.
We could consider, what we did, you saw, we were talking about this with the cemeteries, we do the same thing with our plow contract, if, if fuel increases by X percent, then...
We do an adjustment.
We do an adjustment.
Makes sense.
So, we, we could work out something like that, we'll put that together, and that seems fair.
Yeah.
Okay?
Anything else you need from me?
No, that's all good.
Appreciate having great tenants.
We get a lot of compliments, actually, people like it, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Absolutely, have a good day, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, switching gears, sorry, no, actually, I appreciate it, I think it's a very good suggestion. All right, we need to go. Back to the solar ordinance. There, there seems to be, Dale and I, I've looked at a lot of them online, I'm sure you guys have, I think, there's quite a, a rush in communities right now, those who don't have these are working on them, those that can't get them done are rushing to moratoriums, I think everybody's kind of...
They're in gold rush.
Feeling, yeah, exactly, yep, yep, and the guys who got rich were the ones selling the shovels and the wheelbarrows. And it looks like, I guess, interrupt any time you want, Dale, but the major concern that we have is, is the potential liability for the town, all the setbacks, all of the things that you got, those details are important, but I don't, it's not likely that those things are gonna cost the town money, but it's very possible that the decommissioning of these things, twenty years into the future, could be a nightmare, particularly at the rate these things are expanding, I mean, even the gentleman that came in said he, they would make billions of these in China and ship them in this direction, so, everything looks great right now on paper, but twenty years from now, if you've got an eighty-acre field that's covered in panels, and these things are, we know they have heavy metals or toxic waste, if that whole infrastructure has fallen apart for some reason, the towns are on the hook, and there's no limit to the liability, you don't, you don't get to just say, well, we're not gonna clean it up, you just, you have to clean it up.
Well, I mean, a person could.
No, we don't get to.
No, what I'm saying is, what, this is why, or this is my view, I mean, as far as the town, we don't, we're not, per se, as of right now, looking at doing a big project or whatever, this is really about a landowner, so if a landowner puts in one of these, that's what I'm saying, and he, and this cleanup cost goes through the roof, and then he says, I'm not dealing with this, and the town ends up with the property back...
We were aware of that, I remember Mike...
That's when...
That's when the town...
That's when the town's on the hook.
Have you thought about maybe doing a, any orders, like, having, having the solar company pay for an engineer every five years, every ten years, or whatever, to come in?
Well, there's a lot of ordinances that adopted similar approaches, most of them, I, I, this looks very much like what, Maine has a base requirement, and ours looks kind of like that, but we can...
Is that really, is that where this come from, is really?
No, this came from a collection of towns, mostly four and a...
Correct, but I mean, like, what Mike just said, if this is just duplicating what the state already has, this is...
No, not in this, not exactly, we did what the state already has, I mean, basically, what we wanted is to make sure there was enough funds, and make sure that the funds weren't able to be snatched up if they went bankrupt.
But I don't think we've done that.
We haven't in this.
No.
No.
I don't think we have, I don't think we've got anything secured.
Well, it says the applicant may propose securing the necessary financial assurance and phases, as long as the total required financial insurance is in place a minimum of five years prior to the expected end of useful life.
Sure. When's the expected?
That's fifteen years in.
Right.
Now, there's plenty of municipalities that are saying, we won't even grant the payment until you have a hundred and fifty percent of the total anticipated cost in escrow, that's a huge shift from where we're going.
I thought that's where the security bond part was coming in, by legal jargon, probably was...
Well, if we don't put it in place until fi, you know, the thing could fall apart in fifteen years, we don't know.
Well, and we're, I mean, we're all being told that it's twenty years, we haven't got there yet.
Could be forty.
Could be ten, but if you don't, if you don't know exactly, this is the other thing I'm thinking, if you don't know that life expectancy, how do you know where that five-year minimum is? You really don't.
Well, we're anticipating the conversation, we're gonna kind of put this together, so, we're gonna get everybody's heads together before we finalize.
Yep, yep, that's exactly what we're doing.
Right, because, because it means the same thing, it's like, there's a lot of stuff, and the other thing is, that when I was reading it, there's about wanting the complete electrical plant, the pan, the plan, and all of that, there's nothing in here for the town to recoup anything, so, it's great, somebody gives you to that, but who's gonna be our electrical engineer we're giving it to, to validate that? You know what I'm saying? So, I just want to make sure if we're gonna have an ordinance, and these are requirements we're saying, somewhere, there's gotta be something to help pay for that, so it's not more of a taxpayer...
Some of this is maybe tripled through from the previous ordinance, I mean, this ordinance has been in, on the books for, the majority of it, for, what, seven years?
Yeah.
So, it's already been through all the legal systems, and it's, you know, it's been withstanding, so, it's a safe ordinance to start with for a basis.
Right, but the problem is, if you start out with a safe ordinance...
Well, we had to start somewhere, there was just so many ordinance being thrown, nothing to, you know, you can sit there and look at them all day long, but it comes to the Well, we had to start somewhere. There was just so many ordinance being thrown around. Nothing, you know, you can sit there and look at them all day long, but it comes to the end of the day, you gotta pick one and go.
Friday?
Do we have any idea how many projects are in the works?
We know one is, is being contemplated.
Possibly two.
Possibly two. And the second one's possibly us.
Well, that'd be possibly three.
I talked, I talked to somebody who was selling solar and they said that right now, if you're not in the queue, at least for the Gilbert substation, it's full. You can't.
That's not necessarily true.
Okay, but I'm just, I'm just asking. And the other thing is if, we should do some research into, you don't have to take back a piece of property for the non-paying taxes. So perhaps that's a, a way to.
But it's sitting there, filled with hazardous waste. And it's a piece of property that can never be developed until it's fixed.
Right, it's gonna never be.
Plus, I don't know if you knew this, at least according to our assessor, um, these capital improvements are not taxable. So if somebody puts a million dollars worth of panels.
Isn't it 20% tax-free?
According to the assessor, it was zero.
Nothing.
Yeah.
That's why, so and honestly.
Now, that's, he did say that.
Yes, he did.
He went to a.
Cause of the new, cause of the green deal.
I guess. And in fact, they're talking about retroactively doing that to the windmills as well. Cause he said Parkman is gonna get impacted.
Yeah. So.
So there's, there's no gain for the municipality in this at all. And there is potential risk. So our view is let's eliminate as much of this risk as we possibly can because any, any acres that goes into these panels is acres that, at least for the next 20 years, can't do anything to help the community. So there's some pretty creative ones. Mechanic Falls, we, I'll send you theirs or you can look it up. These guys have really come up with a very creative way to kinda offset some of, some of these impacts. Licensing fees, annual inspections by the code enforcement, which none of this is free, based on kilowatt production, very innovative. Very innovative. In fact, you know what? I got two copies of this.
You do? I brought one.
I'll give you one.
And honestly, everybody knows me, I'm not an ordinance fan. And I'm definitely not a wordy fan when it comes to an ordinance. I want it pretty cut, clean, to the point, but.
Well, we had a couple, like I pulled readables, the very first one, and that was so wordy.
Well, Mechanic Falls is nine pages.
And it's mostly about fees and how we're gonna assess your impact.
I'm not saying, there may be some things in there you may wanna take out, but the way it's worded, even though it's nine pages, I, it's, it's pretty soup to not.
That we were trying to get something in words for the town meeting this year.
That's my concern.
Which is we're right on the edge.
Sure, but it needs to be.
It needs to be right.
Correct.
It's gotta be on the books forever. Jerry and I had that conversation.
Well, you can amend them, but we don't, we don't wanna move forward with something that's got a big hole in it.
Can we just throw out a moratorium and figure out?
That could hap, that's, that's what will happen if we're not.
If we can't all come to agreement of an acceptable one.
Coming to agreement, it's, it's, you know.
Well, no, it is.
Getting the right ordinance for everybody to come to agree. And you don't write a whole thing.
No, but we've got plenty to.
There's enough out there that are already written and are already proven by attorneys that.
And you gotta go through them and you gotta take off, they talk about comprehensive plan, that's gotta be here.
Yep, yep.
Yep, but that's pretty easy. I mean.
Uh, their licensing, again, in light of the fact that there's, there's no real revenue for the town, I was impressed, their medium scale solar array, $5,000 permitting fee. Large scale, 5,000.
Per kilowatt?
5,000 plus 50 cents per kilowatt. Very innovative. Electric storage units, 25 plus 50 cents per kilowatt exceeding 1,000 square feet. If they're gonna go to Mechanic Falls, Mechanic Falls is gonna be compensated.
But the other side of that is, is it, I mean, to say that, that's a hell of a number for a permit. But at the same token. No, but when you've got an ordinance out there and you're requiring all this information, you've gotta start going to attorneys and electrical engineers to validate all this information. $5,000 is not gonna last that long. So I mean, to save $5,000 for that permit, yeah, it's a decent amount of money, but what it's gonna take to validate everything that in, that's in there, I don't see where the town's making a whole lot of money off that permit.
Anyway, you can, guys can review that. But you, what you said is exactly where we're at. If, if we don't get to end game.
We don't have another meeting for, you know, closing out the month.
We can, we can call meetings. I mean, it's really, it's a matter of what do we wanna do? If we wanna push this ordinance through, there's a ton of these out there.
Do we wanna, do we wanna force it through or do we wanna?
If we could, I don't think it's gonna, it wouldn't take very much to, to have a decent ordinance. There's a ton of them out there to choose from. I mean, the biggest thing is, is what, like when I read you guys, this one that you guys are presenting, I don't see where there's a lot of onerousness as for benefits for the town. So I can read this and this is almost, we're doing things to make it more open for, without covering the town. Is that the direction of the planning board?
And that was the biggest worry.
That I agree with, ours too.
I did not, I wasn't thinking myself, I wasn't thinking money's for the town at all.
No, I, the decommissioning is the, is the big event. But that, you gotta be in the front end of that. You can't be 15 years in. And, and even though, even the 150% number, if you figure 5% inflation, which is pretty conservative when we're dealing with a hazardous waste, it probably should be more like triple. I mean.
You could have it reviewed every five years.
The problem with that though is, how do I get the money if five years from now it's doubled?
Right.
I've already got the pollution, sitting in the field. And you say, well, I, we give up. We, we, we're stuck with it.
How about having a decommissioning cost, reengineered every five years?
But if you don't have it upfront, you don't have a mechanism to collect it. You gotta have it. Yeah, otherwise you're at total risk.
Or a share, there you go.
Oh, yeah, no, no, there are mechanisms. They don't have to come up with cash, but bonding companies are gonna, I mean, they can leverage their money a little bit, but. It, right now, I think there is a, a finite amount of allocated production for the state of Maine. In other words.
That was my apartment. They said there was the three fields that were going to be it.
Well, that would be for Parkman. I think Maine itself has.
Saying because of the transference fee or whatever.
Well, the subsidy is essentially, I mean, we, in that meeting we had, it's roughly 300, you're getting 300% more for your electricity than it's worth wholesale. Maine right now has an appetite for X amount of that. If they expand that, if they say, okay, well, we'll do another thousand acres, then that, that could change. But I think right now, if you're in a municipality that is, is very accommodative, like, ah, we don't really need any upfront money, you can come to us in 15 years, you're gonna be likely to get these. Versus Mechanic Falls, they're not gonna get very many of them. So that's, that's kinda, we just wanna protect the town's financial interests.
And that's kinda how I found, there was a link about the Mechanic Falls because of its Article 7, which is that piece as far as permitting. And there was companies.
Yeah, they're going to court.
Yep, they're, the, the company wants to take them to court because they have this annual permit that's in there that they have to. And the solar companies are saying, you can't do that. And all the attorneys said, oh, yes, we can. So that's how I stumbled because of that article. Then it's like, well, what the heck are they really talking about of that article? Then I read it, it's like, who?
Basically, you said it best. You said either write an ordinance that says you want them, or you write an ordinance that says you don't want them.
Yeah, well, and it isn't that I don't want them. I just don't wanna put the town on any liability. I don't wanna be. Right, I mean, I don't wanna be.
Well, some, some don't mind. I mean, if there's cer, if you read them, they, they kinda read like ours does right now. It's like, oh, well, 15 years from now, we'll see what it's gonna be. And they're like, come here. Well, they can have it. I don't think everybody's thought it through.
No, right next door, they, they just.
Just go for it. And it may work out.
They're just going by the state's decommission.
Yep, sure, yep, yep.
It's fine. It's all well and fine. What's the problem?
My only, my biggest fear with this whole thing with solar, honestly, I mean, like right now, it's not that huge. So the recycling end of it and how they're disposing of them, it's kinda, it's not that big of a deal. And then all I think in my head is fiberite. You know, we just went through this. We built this brand new recycling facility and this was gonna be the answer to the state's waste stream and 100% of recycling went away. Most of our trash all knows now goes to landfill. So these are gonna be, I can see in the future, this along with what, the last few products that we are recycling, the cost to recycle is just way more than the cost of making them first time. And then hazardous material and how you're disposing of them, all of that stuff is just gonna get harder and harder and harder.
You, you shared an article where the, the current value of the, these panels, they're actually a plus $20.
As recycling.
So if you use that in your calculation to what decommissioning is gonna be, and then 20 years from now, they're not a plus $20, they're a minus $20, your, your whole formula is gonna fall apart. So those are the things you, we have to look at before we say, okay, yeah, we'll accept, we'll accept that these are gonna be worth 20 bucks a piece. Cause they may very well not be worth 20 bucks a piece. Exactly. Now, everybody's got more heavy metals than they know what to do with and you're gonna be paying through the nose to get rid of them. So that's, that's how we're approaching it. And if, if it's not a rush, if you guys say, hey, let's just do a moratorium, that's exactly what we'll do.
Yeah, if you guys don't wanna have an extra meeting and try to get something together, then we'll just do a moratorium.
I personally feel like we're rushing this.
That's fine. In fact, as far as I'm concerned, if you guys wanna make that decision tonight, Dale and I will move ahead with a moratorium and you guys can, if you'll support that and say, we need more time to work on this, that would be great.
I just, my only fear, my only thing that I don't like about doing that is we're almost forcing a special town meeting. Cause I don't wanna, I don't really wanna wait a, I don't want a moratorium for a year.
No, the moratoriums are allowed to be renewed by the select board.
No, I understand that. That's, that's, but I'm just saying, if we do a moratorium, I would like to get an ordinance on the books. And so if we don't do that, you're at least six months out.
No, we would do it next town meeting.
Yeah, so that's fine.
But they, the moratorium wouldn't expire.
No, I'm not worried about that part. It's just a matter of, I didn't really wanna see this go another year.
And who knows? We might have other things to talk about, but if we don't, I wouldn't, I can't see us doing an ordinance at this level, anything less than a town meeting, I mean, a manual town meeting.
Correct.
But.
As with any ordinance, though, when you look at it, you have to protect the town. As, as a planning board and code enforcement, we look at, we look at the citizen's side of it and protecting the town's side of it.
Well, the, the town is made up of citizens. The town is made up of citizens.
Yes.
But I think even you, the planning board should be looking at, the town is the best interest, not the citizens.
Well, I mean, I don't see them as mutually exclusive.
Right, I mean, you should be, your, your number one interest, I would think, should be the liability of the town.
Which is its citizens.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but I, sorry, and this is just speaking in general with regard to ordinance. I think what Jerry is saying is he's looking at the person who maybe wants to put in whatever, a building or a solar panel and, and that, isn't that what you're saying as far as citizen? Yes, he's not, you know, the person who is following this ordinance.
No, it, it's your land. You should get to do what you want with it, basically. I mean, if I wanna build a chicken barn, I should be able to have a chicken barn. And I agree with that.
But it's not town.
Well, I'm.
See, that affects all the citizens. Those are the things that we work down.
Right, but if I put solar panels on my property and the rules change over the next 20 years and I decide, you know what? I'm just not gonna pay taxes on that property across the road because it cost me half a billion dollars to clean it up, the citizens of Sangerville are stuck.
Right.
Okay, that's the difference. And in the meantime, if I build a chicken barn, the citizens of Sangerville get to assess a value on that and they get to tax it. If I put a million dollars worth of panels, it's like they're invisible. Town doesn't receive any compensation for that. So I don't see it as a win for the community. It might be a win.
For an individual.
Well, and the company, this, basically they lease the land.
Who's not gonna be a citizen.
So it's some big corporation that's coming in and they're, that's fine, they're making money. I'm all about making money. But there is a lot of liability for the citizens of the community because a lot of people don't really appreciate it. But at a municipal level, everybody who owns property is on the hook. You don't get to say, you know what? We're just not gonna pay that bill. You're just, whatever the taxes take, we have to do it and we gotta pay it. So that's how it works. And if you, we, we start having hundreds and hundreds of acres of these things and this thing doesn't go well, Sangerville's not a very rich town.
And it is possible. I, I talked to somebody this week that live in the system that does the work themselves, bought the panels. A little over $8,000 and it runs the whole house. It's not, it's on par. It totally runs it.
Sure.
Even has some heat problems. So my point is saying that is technology's gonna change rapidly.
And those people aren't even impacted. There aren't any ordinances around doing your home. I mean, we're not even suggesting that.
But my point was these panels are gonna, they're gonna change a lot.
Oh, they have already, yep.
A 30 acre field is gonna be ancient, you know, this created today, five years, 10 years from now, it's gonna be old news and they don't even think to do that in five years.
And, and who knows?
Well, you're gonna have to if you're gonna do it in Maine. There's not enough sunlight.
I would say, yeah, we're about the worst place in the country to put it. We got like four months of sunlight.
Yeah.
And if it works, it's fine. If, if all of these contingencies are not gonna matter if it works, it's, it's if it doesn't work.
All of this money set aside for decommissioning.
Yeah, they'll get it all back. So.
Unless they do a share, they'll never get that back.
No, but they, it's built into their expense and, and nobody gets harmed and everything's fine and the planet's greener.
Right, but it's not, it's upfront cost on them, so they already know it.
Yep. So.
I don't mind working on more plus the consensus.
We, actually, we will work, we'll work on the memorandum so it's ready. And so you, if, if you're not ready to cross the finish line at the end, we'll, we will be. So.
I'm not saying that that Mechanic Falls one is the answer. I'm saying that that one is definitely.
You, you just like the.
It's not a bad blueprint.
Yeah. And eve, even the verbiage of it as you're reading it, it's like, ooh, you know, everything about it, it's, it's got a lot of, I'm not saying the snots things in there, you're not gonna wanna take out. But I think it's a, it's a pretty good starting point. And I definitely like that permitting process and I like that, even that annual. I mean, that keeps it on track and, and there's funds available so that when you do have to hire people to go do things, there's funds there for the town to pay for that. So it's, you know, it's not a ongoing cost for the town. So.
No, it's like, I, I, and our ordinance says maintenance required. You guys, if things that are painted need to be painted. But we don't have a mechanism to make them do it.
Right.
But under Mechanic Falls, they, they literally could paint it if they wanted to, cause they're gonna, they're receiving funds. They could force some action. So, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen any of these ordinances that have a fining mechanism in them. And I don't really wanna get involved in more of that.
No, I don't either. But I like, I just like that, again, those permitting, it just helps pay for all this stuff.
We've gone all the way from 14 page ones to two page ones to.
Well, I think that one's nine, so.
Yeah. Which for me to think about is, oh my God. If it was two, I would've been happy. But then once I was reading down through it, it's like, oh, it's nine pages, but this is really makes sense. So.
And our neighbors took a floor and cut it into two.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm same way. If it can happen, great. And if it can't, follow an agreement, we go with a moratorium. So.
Yep, and several towns have just done it. They're doing exactly the same thing.
Yeah, Brown, Brownville putting a, a more.
Is that right? Yep.
Yeah.
I think Sydney did.
It's for, it's probably for this very greenhouse.
Correct.
It's so new.
Well, and I think a lot of people are doing, they're following the state's guidelines and they.
Everybody waited for somebody to write one.
Yeah.
And then they jumped on and started tearing it apart.
Do you really think about this? If, anybody who's following the state's lead on this, they don't have any protection. I mean, hopefully these things don't blow up, but if they do, this isn't gonna work. So, okay. Anything else on that? So you guys are just gonna keep us posted?
But to declare a moratorium, the town will support it?
No, it goes to the town. It'll be on the warrant.
Yes, okay.
We can extend it.
Once it's approved, if we run out of time before our.
Moratorium wouldn't fall until town meeting.
Correct.
If, I mean, your projects going through doesn't affect that.
Well, they, they haven't, they haven't, they haven't broke ground.
Well, I received notice.
Yep, yep. But as far as I know, nobody in Sangerville has broken ground yet. Okay?
Yep.
You good?
I think we are. Um, well, any select board concern? I have one. Because I was going through my old, I was going through all the old annual reports. And there's a policy on the community room.
Oh, it's no longer in the, you don't put it in the town.
Well, it, it kinda jarred my thinking. There was a, there was a policy around the community room and people, it was there for the community. I'm not sure that it really, until we have a dedicated community room that's secure, that we should be allowing people to just come here and have a meeting. Only officers, employees, firemen, fire people should be in here. I don't think we should be, or we should at least consider, do we want outside groups using this facility for meetings?
I would say no.
That's my instinct. And, and now if we have a new.
Insurance company would.
Probably our insurance company would not like outside, you know, anybody just having access to our fire equipment.
Correct.
This is safety equipment and if I'm a fireman, I just, I'm not sure I would want just people just.
I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of pretty sensitive stuff. You start thinking about it.
Yep. So, I mean, it's one thing for officers, planning board, you know, actual.
Yeah.
Employees. But I think beyond that, I, I don't think this facility should be opened up for private use.
Okay, I'll.
Anybody that affects, just reach out to them, let them know.
Yeah, I will reach out to them.
So, are we all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Uh, the only thing I, selectmen's not really a concern, but a kind of a thank you. Silver's Mills is way better to drive on, crisp them down through the grader and cut the ice off it and smooth those culvert bumps out, it's...
I drove it the, yeah, uh, Sunday. I was really impressed.
You didn't know how bad it was until I got to it again.
I don't believe it at all, so...
Okay, for sure. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? It's ten minutes to five, and we are adjourned.